Okay, the Planning Commission meeting for December 9th, 2013 is called to order. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda tonight? None? Okay. So, our --
I'd like to get them as possible.
There's a one copy of the agenda that's on the back. There should've been one, just the one.
I don't know. You have minutes for one. Appreciate it.
Okay. Denise is about to wander in here.
I'll thank you when she walks in. She's gonna find herself here. Go ahead.
It's not that close, it's just I walked. Mr. Mahoney, where are you sitting in my seat?
Because I was told to.
Because you weren't here yet. Well, we figured we'd leave a hole.
You want it back?
Tony, do you want to do a roll call?
Denise, you want it back?
You can have it for gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'll go through and do a roll call real quick. Commissioner Espy?
Here.
Commissioner Guile? Commissioner Henkin? Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Mayby?
Here.
Commissioner McGriff?
Here.
Chair Kidwell?
Here. So, we will proceed with the public hearing related to the South End Concept Plan, PC 13-081, L 13-03, and the Oregon City Municipal Code Amendments, L 13-04. We have a staff report.
Excuse me, Chair. Before we begin, I have a correction to make to one of the records that was submitted. The PC 1125 2013 tally of votes. The agenda item under the 722 13 minutes shows me as voting yes when I abstained.
The 722.
Two.
Okay.
Shows me as voting yes when I abstained on those minutes. Since this is a land use type record, it's important to make sure that they're right.
Is also toward as land use.
Yes, there is.
Your vote was abstaining, not yes.
Correct.
There was nowhere to say such as normalcy or selfie until they tell you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayby.
Land use is good.
So, we will proceed then with the staff report. Thank you, Chair Kidwell. Good evening, planning commissioners. And this is the second public hearing for the adoption of the South End Concept Plan. Our last public hearing was November 25th. Tonight, what I'll be doing is going over our staff report and providing an overview of some of the exhibits that we're entering into the record as part of that staff report. And we will be requesting a continuance of tonight's public hearing until January 13th, 2014, to allow sufficient time for some additional comments that are pending from Metro. And also to allow time for the public to review some data that was inadvertently left out of the transportation analysis, the raw traffic volume data, which DKS has provided and is now available. So, with that, I will go into my PowerPoint and provide an overview of some of the requirements that we're required to show compliance with here.
Who is speaking? Who is your speaker?
Thank you. My name is Peter Walter. I'm the Associate Planner for the City of Oregon City. I'm the Project Manager for the Concept Plan. And with me tonight are our consultants, representatives who could be here. Cogan Owens Cogan, represented by Kirsten Green. And we have Todd Chase from FCS Group, who is providing some help in the funding and financing portions of the plan and some of the recommendations that have come out of the plan in that regard.
I'm not sure if your microphone is on.
My microphone is on.
Sit closer. We don't bite.
This is the concept plan diagram. The legend on the right side shows the conceptual land use designations for the plan in small lot residential, medium lot residential, and large lot residential. It also shows what we're showing as known protected wetlands and areas of parks, school, and private open space. It's showing rural reserves and urban reserves. And the blue circles represent a quarter-mile walking radius. So, this is the basic concept plan. There's also a much more detailed set of plans within the concept plan, yes?
I just want to be clear. When you say blue circles, you mean the light blue circles?
Light blue circles.
Not the polka dots, which are municipal stormwater sites?
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Because they're both blue circles.
Yeah. And on the final diagram, we're saving all of the edits to the final draft until the end because we have -- and one of the comments that have come out of that is that these blue dots will be replaced by more conceptual dotted circles to show that there can be variation in the location of these facilities. But those blue dots generally represent downstream drainage basins, not the actual locations of storm ponds. Everything on the plan is conceptual, subject to further refinement based on much more detailed site-specific land division surveys in the future and other things. The conceptual diagram is implemented through this proposed comprehensive plan designations. Until annexation occurs, all zoning designations outside the city limit within the urban growth boundary will remain county zoning designations. And when a property owner annexes into the city, the city will use the comprehensive plan to apply a zoning designation. Until that time, the city will adopt comprehensive plan designations for areas outside its city limits. And that's what this plan shows. And this plan reflects the land uses on the previous plan.
Building permits will still be issued by the county, though, right?
Can you speak into your microphone again? I hear you back here.
There's a couple of seats up here in front, sir, if you want to come up.
He don't control the volume.
So, once --
Can you do your microphone, please?
What I'm asking is that the county will still be issuing.
No, once a property is in the city, the city will issue building permits.
No, I mean while it continues to be outside.
Yeah. Until property is annexed into the city, the county is responsible for all land use and building permits.
Pete, is there any changes to the urban growth management agreement with --
Not proposed at this time, but it is a recommendation coming out of the plan, is to take a closer look at our 1990 urban growth management agreement and look for refinements there, too. Yeah.
Yeah, it might not be a bad idea to come up with a shopping list of things that deal with edge areas between the interface between county property and city property and some of the issues that arise out of that.
Yeah. That's an important consideration and one of the things that we'll be addressing in our letter to Metro, which I'll go into. So, the areas on the plan that I've outlined here with the circular black outlines, I want to go into detail on what those represent. So, this comprehensive plan map should accurately reflect the concept plan. And the previous version that we showed you on November 25th had some areas missing from it that did not accurately reflect the land use designations on the concept plan. So, I'm going to go through what these mean. In the lower-left corner, which I'm waving the cursor at, this area on the November 25th map was shown as low-density residential, and it has been changed to medium-density residential to reflect the comp plan. This area here, to the east of that, was shown as medium-density residential and has been changed to high-density residential to implement the concept plan. The area north along Butteville Road in these parcels that I'm showing has been changed from low-density residential to medium-density residential. And the area over here, which is an existing city subdivision, south of South End Road, Fandango Court, has been changed from medium-density residential to low-density residential since it's an already-developed subdivision in the city limits, and there is no potential for redevelopment of those lots. The changes, the net impact of these changes is as follows. The number of low-density residential gross acres changed from 390 acres to 375. It's a net change of 25 acres. So, medium-density residential changed from 181 acres to 187 acres, net change of six acres. High-density residential changed from 11 acres to 19 acres, net change of eight acres. The amount of mixed-use corridor and quasi-public did not change. They're both at 16 acres for mixed-use corridor, and quasi-public acreage is 17 acres gross.
Can you go over the low-density residential numbers again?
On this map, the amount of low-density residential gross acreage is shown as 375 acres.
And the previous one?
390.
Okay. And you said it was 25. It's only 15 difference.
Oh, yeah. 25? Yeah. 20. Yeah, 15. Okay. Thank you. The exhibits that we're entering into the record tonight include the staff memorandum that I'm reading from dated December 2nd, which was emailed to you on Friday. We're also entering Exhibits 1 through 14 to the staff report. And within those, that includes our preliminary Title 11 findings, which is Exhibit 10, which is a matrix. It goes through each of Title 11 sections in detail and provides us a finding. And addendums to that report include a density analysis, which is Exhibit 10A, and housing affordability analysis, which is Exhibit 10B, sorry. That's a typo. Exhibit 18E is the addendum I referred to, which is the raw traffic count data, which is in it, which would be added to Appendix C, our transportation element, background data. And Exhibit 13 consists of the ancillary documents, which are updates to the respective comprehensive plan documents, including our parks, recreation, open spaces, trails, sewer, water, and stormwater master plan documents. And what these one-page sheets are for is just to provide a summary of the plan sections, and they'd be added into each of the ancillary documents. It tells whoever's looking in that document where to reference that public facility plan or park plan in the South End Concept Plan. We also have entered into the record an email from Paul Edgar with respect to the traffic So, I'm going to go into the regulatory requirements briefly. Plan must show compliance with our own comprehensive plan, with Metro Title 11, planning for new urban areas. This is a chapter of the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan for the metro region, and also for statewide planning goals and requirements. Oregon City Comprehensive Plan Amendment considerations are whether the plan implements -- the plan can be implemented. And what that means is we have to adopt comprehensive plan designations, zoning amendments, and capital improvement program to implement the plan in order to comply with state, local, and regional goals. Second consideration is the adequacy of the plan to guide land use actions, including an examination of trends. And the plan includes an overview of existing conditions, including demographic, environmental, and economic data, and projections from market and housing needs in the timeframe of the plan from present day to 2035. Third consideration is whether the plan still reflects the community needs, desires, attitudes, and conditions, and this shall include changing demographic patterns and economics. So, the visions and value statements, which is the -- one of the most important aspects of the public involvement work that we did to implement this plan, that reflects the community desires for the area based on our community advisory team input and the four public open houses that we did and the extensive public involvement process that we told you about in the previous work session and at the previous public hearing. So, that kind of provides the meat of the desires of the existing residents and what they feel the area needs to develop into in the future as well. Supported that were all of the different types of analysis in the concept plan, including the household economics and demographics summaries that we provided. Finally, the fourth consideration is with the addition of updated factual information, including that made available to the city by regional, state, and federal agencies. So, technical data is included to reflect new information from various sources through our technical advisory team and all the applicable public agencies that were involved. And that's reviewed in the existing conditions report, as well as in the plan sections that deal with service provision within the concept plan area. Oregon City's comprehensive plan goals and the applicable findings are provided in various sections in the staff report. The Goal 1 Citizen Involvement section, the findings for that are on pages 9 through 11. Goal 2 Land Use findings are on page 11 and 12 of the staff report, specifically dealing with efficiency of land use, provision of urban services to serve the concept plan area. Goal 6 Quality of Air, Land, and Water Resources, and findings for that on page 12 of the staff report. Goal 11 Public Facilities, findings for that on page 13 and 15 of the staff report. Goal 12, our transportation goal, findings are on pages 16 through 18 of the staff report, supported by the transportation element of the plan. And Goal 14 Urbanization, findings for that goal are on pages 18 through 19 of the staff I'm going to go into little detail on Title 11. As detailed on our previous presentation on November 25th, the concept plan must include a complete framework for urbanization of the planning area so as to guide future development. This includes a long-range analysis of housing needs and commercial development to serve the concept plan area, needed transportation facilities, provisions for public facilities and amenities, schools and natural resources protections. And each of these elements are discussed in Exhibit 10, which is the Title 11 Compliance Our finding is that, based on our analysis, we will substantially comply with Metro. However, Metro has not had time to review our analysis yet, and a letter from them is forthcoming. We plan to have them submit their response to the city at the January 13th hearing and be here in person to address our comments. I'm going to go into even more detail about what we're trying to show Metro. So, part of Metro Title 11 Compliance is a housing density or housing capacity analysis. Within the concept plan area, there are two sub-areas. There is a pre-2002 urban growth boundary expansion area and a 2002 urban growth boundary expansion area. The acreages that we base the density analysis on are net acreages. That means that after developable land, developed land and resource land and land that cannot be built on are taken out of the equation, you are left with a net acreage within which you have to provide a minimum density. The pre-2002 urban growth boundary is 196 acres, and that is required to meet the metropolitan state housing rural density requirement of eight unit per acre. And that nets out to 1,568 units. The 2002 urban growth boundary expansion area is 133 acres, so it's less than the pre-2002 area. But that has to show full compliance at 10 units per acre. So, you can mix the density within these areas throughout the entire concept planning area and provide the needed housing units through a variety of different land use designations. And so, these are proposed in the low-density, medium-density, and high-density residential The Metro assumption also includes what's called an underbuild factor. This is an assumption that you are not going to build at full capacity, but that you should make a 20% reduction of your -- you should assume a 20% reduction in that overall density. And so, the plan averages out to 2,192 units overall at a density of 6.7 units per acre. A low estimate, which is based on if the plan only develops at the lowest zoning designation for each land use category of 1,747 units, and a high estimate, which assumes that the plan fully develops at the highest density zoning for each land use category of 2,637 units, or eight units per acre. That's assuming the 20% underbuild. If we do not assume the 20% underbuild, then the plan averages out to 2,680 units with a low estimate of 2,136 and a high estimate of 3,224. Yes?
So, has Metro -- I mean, these are lower than what Metro is projecting.
Right.
So, have they given you any signals as to whether or not that was going to be okay? Or?
We worked with Metro on how we would calculate our substantial compliance report, and they helped us, you know, refine our reasons why we would provide substantial compliance. But they haven't formally responded to it yet because they're looking at the numbers. Yeah. Yeah.
Pete, just before you go on, I think one of the things that we talked about on the citizen advisory team was that we -- that the group felt that we had enough justification based on the documentation from the public output outreach that we had regarding the rural character of the area. We discussed the fact that this was lower, but there are reasons why, and that'll be part of the city's submittal. So, I, you know, we're not -- the CAD is not supporting being up at those upper limits because that then would sort of negate the whole process of what the community told us they wanted during the South End Road Concept Plan.
By no means am I advocating for higher numbers, but I'm just -- I just want to make sure that Metro has been
Alerted.
brought along, you know, in this process, and that it doesn't become a surprise to them when we try to go through.
Pete, can you go back a couple slides?
I don't think they'll be surprised.
Yeah. I don't believe they'll be surprised, and I'm going to go into a little more detail on why.
So, the range, the underbuild is 2,192 to 2,637.
Right.
And then the other one without the underbuild is 2,680 to 3,24.
Right.
We believe we've documented why we shouldn't apply the underbuild in Oregon City.
Yeah. I'm going to go into that a little bit.
Yep.
Yeah. So, yeah, I can't emphasize more strongly, Commissioner McGriff, that the broad mandate from the community is not to
Did you mean him?
No. You.
Because I know what it was.
Good to agree with you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Oh, perfect.
That the broad mandate here is to try to keep the densities as low as we can and still be in compliance with Title 11.
I'll worry about that, yeah.
For a variety of reasons. People have strongly emphasized how much they like open space, how much they enjoy living next to low-density and open space in the county. We've got Kanema bluffs to the west. We've got geographic constraints. We have rural reserve. So, I'll just go through these details in a little more detail. The vision and values of the concept plan clearly state that the number-one value is to preserve as much as possible a rural feel. We talked about that at length at the November 25th hearing. And these are in no particular order, but that one is certainly the most important one. The second factor that we've just explained in Exhibit 10B, which is our factors that lead us to believe we're in substantial compliance. The transportation system consists of South End Road. It will be the only road in and out of the area for the foreseeable future until development occurs and a secondary connector road can be built to serve the area. Until that time, there will be limitations on the capacity of South End Road. Although we've identified the capacity of South End Road and what it needs in order to handle the concept plan at build-out, it will be expensive to build those improvements, and they won't be built overnight. They'll be built as development occurs over the period of the planning horizon, which is a 20-year planning horizon. So, we acknowledge that there are transportation constraints in this area. You've got an area that is geographically and geologically somewhat isolated from connections to 909E. So, it's -- we've talked about that in the plan, how we can't provide a secondary connector road to 909E within the concept plan area. It's outside the scope of the plan and outside our jurisdiction at this time. So, for the foreseeable future, South End Road will be the primary focus of our transportation improvement dollars. The initial Metro urban growth boundary expansion was for 630, 650-acre area, significantly more land than was actually brought into the 2002 urban growth boundary. And they did make some projections for housing units in that projection, which are significantly lower than the number of housing units that are projected in the concept plan. So, we've asked Metro to clarify what their assumptions were when they did that. Not because it may change our analysis at all based on what we have to comply with for Title 11, but in order to know what their assumptions were in terms of constraints and housing capacity when they did the urban growth boundary expansion. We feel that that is a significant factor. The fourth item is the market demand analysis for housing reflects less housing units than Metro Title 11 requires. So, based on what we know about spending power and ability to attain housing in the concept plan area, I believe we're looking at a housing unit number in the market demand of about 1,700 units. And I'll check that. Have Todd verify that. It's in our funding and finance report. But it is less than 2,800 units projected for Title 11. Fifth factor is that, based on historical analysis of land divisions in Oregon City, there is no underbuild factor. We've looked at all of our land divisions, which have been done in the last five years, and they have achieved an average of 97.8% build-out. So, that means that they're not taking advantage of larger lots within the zoning designation, but they're maximizing the number of lots that they can do in a land division for whatever it's zoned at. And in some cases, those include rezoning to higher densities. In other cases, they're just, you know, doing a straight subdivision within the zoning that they have. But Metro has indicated that if we can show historically that we've met But Metro has indicated that if we can show historically that we've met, we've maximized our residential land capacity for subdivisions, then that is a factor for substantial compliance. And we can't.
A question about that.
Yeah.
Doesn't that then argue for the higher density number that we'll build out at 2,700, not at 1,700? And I'm rounding.
It does, yes. Yeah, it does. But Metro requires us to use the underbuild analysis if we were to be fully compliant. So we've just, we've assumed, we're proposing lesser housing units because it complies with the concept plan goals and objectives and the desires of the, of the community out there.
I think on the low end and the high end. For example, the comprehensive plan designation of low-density residential has three zones, R10, R8, and R6. And the low end assumed more R10.
Yep.
And the high end assumed more zoning changes to R6. So it's not necessarily, that discrepancy between the low end and high end isn't 100% attributed to the underbuild factor. It's attributed to which of those zoning designations, when you have multiple options, like in low-density residential, which one gets applied more frequently? So it was showing that range based on the implementing zone that then gets adopted. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, it does. I guess my question is, in my decade of active service, I've never seen anybody come in and say, "Please change my R6 to R10 because I only want to build nine houses." So it just seems to me that to show a low estimate with the underbuild and talk about 1,800, when, at least, like I said, for the last decade, the reality is 2,600. And I know in all the talk that we've done, we've always talked about around 2,500. And I guess the other question that kind of goes with that, I mean, since we're kind of playing at the 2,500, can we get any credit from Metro for the fact that we're, you know, such high-density that they'll back off on our density requirements in this and say, "Look, you've infilled, you've done lots of good stuff, you're at 97% build. We're okay with you being at only 72% or 81% in this zone. Don't expect it to be a habit," but, you know, I mean, because then over the, over this, the whole city, we're still in the, going to be at like 90%. So we'll still have...
I think there's a couple of things to your first question about, you know, when we, when we annex a property, historically, it's been given the lowest-density zoning designation. So if you get annexed to your low-density residential, you come in at R10.
Right.
And so while, when the commission has seen, you're right, we don't usually see someone requesting to go from R6 to R10. You usually see R10 to R8 or R10 to R6. But you also, you know, for every zone change we get, there's five subdivisions that come in and just build at R10 because they don't want to go through the zone change process. So it's kind of that averaging, you know, it's going to be somewhere in between that high and that low. And in the end, you know, with the guidance of the concept plan, I think it will make zone change request decisions a little easier in that we haven't had a concept plan to rely on in other areas of the city. And so you tend to see a little bit more of a case-by-case basis taken out of the context of the larger discussion. So if someone came in on this map and was right up against Kanema Bluff, where everything we've shown is somewhat larger lots, you know, you would have a justification or a resource to go back to and look to in your decision-making. So I think that there's still quite a bit of discretion in terms of what gets implemented in terms of the zoning code itself.
And you're saying that initially, if it's identified as the lower-density, it will be initially zoned as R10?
Unless we make a decision while we're doing the annexation, you know, that this property on the concept plan should be R8. You know, that's a factor that we can consider when we're doing that. But historically, we've just dealt with the annexation because it needs to go, not only to the city commission, but then to a vote. And then we would come, then historically what was happening, then folks would come back if there was a rezone. But not that that might change in the future, but I guess what I'm trying to point out is with the concept plan, you'll have another tool to make informed decisions about what the appropriate zoning should be.
Is that typically when the zoning would take place, is at the annexation?
Right now, when you, if the vote is successful, then we need to assign a zone to it, and our code defaults to the, to the lowest density per our code unless we change it while we're going through the public hearing process to a different zone, or someone comes in at a later date and requests that change.
And the most likely time that they would request that change is when they requested an annexation?
It depends. You know, some folks, some have, some have requested those upfront. It's rare, honestly. They usually wait to see if they can get annexed, and then they start the more detailed analysis that's needed for a zone change request.
Have you guys explored amending the code just to allow the comprehensive plan designation to transform into the zoning upon annexation?
Well, and we haven't in the past. It's certainly something that we could look at to, to try and address this inconsistency between, there may be a property that's annexed that we have...
It would eliminate a step, I think.
Right.
And it would just automatically, since it's on the comprehensive plan, you know, you've done all the studies to determine what zone it would be.
Right.
Once it's annexed, then it just becomes that zone automatically when it, when it gets annexed.
Right.
But we really haven't done that. So how would, how would that work?
No, I mean, but, well, this is what we're doing now for the comprehensive plan. It would make sense to have a comprehensive plan designation be consistent with the future zoning designation.
But the comprehensive plan designation for low-density residential is just LR. That doesn't equate to zoning. Because we, as Tony just said, we have three different zoning designations.
It equates more to the zoning that would be appropriate for that designation than R10.
We did look at this a little bit as a potential zoning amendment, but since it would affect properties outside the concept plan area, we're considering asking the planning commission to defer that type of code amendment to mid-2014 so that we could look at that as an implementing step, so you could get a little more fine-grained analysis.
Yeah, so this would be, I completely understand both points in terms of, because it is a little bit of a dilemma when you have this assumption of, let's say, either a mix of lot sizes or a gradient going from large, smaller to larger, but our code isn't set up to address that yet. And that's why, as Pete was saying, part of this approval, hopefully, would be to keep the, be able to come back in six months with the implementing code and any tweaks that are necessary if we can work through that.
Fine, yeah.
Tony, there seems to be a conflict here between what the people want out there, Title 11, and the economics of it, which, how are you going to predict that? We haven't been able to predict the economics of this, of this national scene for the last five years. And Title 11 seems to be the monster in the room because if we don't meet the standards of Title 11, Metro's not going to adopt this plan. And if they don't adopt the plan, then where are you? And to reach out to the people, it's gone. Our credibility is gone. So those conflicts, you know, they're way up here. We're talking down here, technique and technicalities. But we've got to, what are we after? Are we after satisfying the people what they want, which I think to some extent is unrealistic? Nobody wants change, you know? Nobody wants change.
I would, I would say that we've tried to do a very thorough job of listening to people and...
I don't doubt that a bit.
And encompassing their concerns for the, for the things about this concept plan area that need to remain in place in order for it to be a livable area. I think people understand that some of the improvements that are desired on the South End can only clump with new development. There's not a lot of money available to build trails and park facilities without development.
Well, my question is, how do you throw 2,800 more units into that area and call it livable? How do you do that?
You do it through a variety of, well, what we're talking about in the concept plan, you do it through fully integrating a transportation system that makes it better connected, that provides people with better choices to get around, provides people with a variety of housing types that they can afford to live in, but which are good quality and, and which are based on public improvements that meet a city standard.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm agreeing with you. I'm just, this is an age-old question, how to deal with change.
Yeah, sure.
And how to pay for public, public facilities and at the same time, address what the stakeholders out there seem to think they want.
Pete, before you, you didn't answer the second half about, can we get credit from Metro for our already-high density?
In terms of the South End concept planning area, and I think that's where Pete was talking about some of the findings and justifications that we were putting forward.
Okay.
You need to think about it in terms of, you know, trying to, when we expand the UGB, and it's that balance of urban and rural, it's that balance of extending critical and needed infrastructure, and how to best, how to best do that. And if we agree that if every jurisdiction could just come in and put in three units per acre, you know, that has large impacts for our community in terms of how do you accommodate the population growth that will occur? Just even conservative estimates of that.
Yeah, no, I understand. I mean, a 12-inch sewer pipe can handle 15 to 2,500 houses. So at 1499 and at 1,500, it doesn't cost you any more for those last five houses, just speaking globally. And, you know, same with traffic signals and everything else, there's tipping points that occur at each thing. I just, and I'm not advocating that we keep the density so low that nothing happens out there. But, you know, for, what I've heard from the forums and what I've heard from our numbers here is we're kind of looking at staying at the low end to keep the rural feel. And if we can, you know, if Metro just comes back and says, "Your plan's great, done." But if it's an arguing point or a persuasion point, I would definitely say we need to say, "Look, we're dense, not stupid dirt things." And, you know, and so we should get a little credit for that and, you know, and, you know, try to keep that little area of, I mean, all you have to do is point it South End, you know, and say, "Look, we need to keep it as low as possible. Give us some credit because the city-wide average is going to still be quite high." So I just, something to throw out at you anyway to keep it...
Completely understood.
Yeah.
Pete, if that, if that tax base out there didn't increase, just nothing happened out there, could that, that area out there pull enough weight to pay for the services that are demanded in terms of utilities and infrastructure and parks?
No, certainly not.
So there's, at what point do we allow that to build out there so that it at least pulls its own weight?
Well, I think we can probably, that's a pretty open question, but I'll try to tackle it with Todd Chase here, since he's, he's really done a good analysis of how this concept plan compares to other concept plans in terms of square foot building for public facilities. So I think we can look at that in some more detail. I just want to get through some of these slides.
Before you go to the next slide, you kind of buzzed through at 55 miles an hour and that, oh, that slide you just, you had on the screen there.
This one.
Transportation constraints. You mentioned that there was kind of a bottleneck issue there, and I guess the question is, one of the big issues that was raised previously is the lack of public transportation in that Is there, is there a plan that we're looking at to bridge that gap, the lack of public transportation along the South End?
Yeah, let's see. As far as the transit analysis that's been done for the plan, let me draw your attention to the transportation analysis that DKS did, which is Appendix C. So they talk about it in some detail. They've identified two conceptual options, just to begin with. Currently, transit service is not provided in the study area. It is provided in Oregon City by TriMet via seven fixed bus routes. And in addition, seasonal transit service is provided to residents and tourists via Oregon City Trolley.
Which, of course, you now have to take that out.
I now have to take that out. But there is a senior center that provides ride connection bus as well to needed households, needy households. And regional services provided by Canby Area Transit System, South Clackamas Transportation District, and Amtruck. We're nearly two miles from the closest bus stop at Warner Parrot and Warner Millie Road, and so that's greater than the average walk. So there's a problem there. Park and ride facilities are provided for transit unit users at the Oregon City Lynn Avenue, Williams Avenue intersection, and at Clackamas Community College, both of which are a long way from the study area. So what the concept plan does is set the stage for future transit, recognizing that that type and extent of improvements will play out over time based on development. TriMet is going to provide us some written comments for the January 13 meeting. Steve Kautz from TriMet has sent me an email today indicating that he will provide a written comment in response to this section. So the two conceptual options that they've identified in the plan are ones that were also on the transportation system plan, and that is a route modification that would route, Route 33 from Myers Road down Leland Road, west down McCord Road, and Partler Road to South End Road. Now, this connection can occur until the collector connection is made between Partler Road and the concept plan area. That route would travel south to South End Concept Plan before heading north again through the conceptual collector road to Deer Meadows Lane, Madrona Ly. So that is the route that was on the TSP as a transit route. The other options are a new local loop route that connects to the Oregon City Transit Center and serves South End Concept Plan area. And the third option would be to work with another transit provider such as Canby Area Transit, 99E, and hopefully loop that up through South End Road. So one of the recommendations coming out of the plan is to further explore these options.
Thank you.
Well, get out of your way, Pete. Just keep on doing a good job.
Thank you.
Good questions. So the other consideration is that our, the mixed-use areas that are shown on the concept plan, if they're zoned to neighborhood commercial, that zone allows housing units in it up to 50%, although that doesn't get counted towards Title 11 because it's mixed use. We consider it a potential source of housing because we have seen that mixed-use zoned areas on South End Road, at Lawton Road, have been developed as housing in recent history. And finally, the point that we were making is that 80% of the concept plan area butts a rural reserve. And so there's a desire here to not only reduce density at the edges of the concept plan area, but by doing so, provide a transition of density out towards these rural reserve areas so that not only do you have a land use transition, but you also have a transportation transition because of... also have a transportation transition because the intensity of traffic on those roads as you're coming into Oregon City will change. And if Clackamas County is not going to be allocating their limited transportation funding to upgrade roads in a rural reserve to an urban standard, so there needs to be some transitioning of our roadway improvements, and one of the ways that we can do that is by keeping the density low at the extreme outskirts of the concept plan.
Don't you mean that they won't want to upgrade it unless they want us to take it over, because we're not going to take it over unless it's improved?
I'm just talking about the area outside the urban.
Oh, outside, yeah, outside, yeah.
Yeah. So, there's going to, if we urbanize and have high density right next to UGB in this location.
Right, it's not going to happen.
It would be an abrupt transition, and it's not going to happen because of, you're right.
They have, I think he said they might be able to get to 15% of what they have on their TSP, and they have, their public hearing is tomorrow night, another one.
Right. So, briefly, wanted to go over Exhibit 10B, which is a report that details the housing mix, density, and affordability of housing units. These are general bullets that I'm making here. The concept plan would provide affordability through market rate homes at affordable price points. Approximately 44% of the units in the concept plan are going to be single-family detached dwellings, and 56% would be attached townhome or multifamily units. That wide mix of housing types allows attached, detached, accessory dwelling units, and manufactured housing products in accordance with state law. New multifamily and townhome dwelling units are likely to be affordable to houses which earn between 80 to 100% of the regional median household income. And price points for the single-family detached units are reflective of price points in the Portland metro area, and $2,013 average housing price for that is around $375,000. And here's a chart that reflects showing that. Suggested housing types based on the plan designations, there would be about 336 apartments, 1,106 townhomes duplexes or cottages, and 1,195 single-family detached units to hit the 2,637 units envisioned at the high estimate. Finally, the Title 11 also requires that we show compliance with the regional transportation plan. Exhibit 5 details the transportation planning rule compliance, which is statewide transportation planning rule. Oregon Department of Transportation has indicated verbally that the plan complies with the TPR based on what they've seen to date, and that is based on the most recent modeling for traffic analysis that's been done for all of the intersections within and outside of the transportation, the concept plan. The problem intersections that we discussed at the last hearing are the ones, the three intersections that we discussed, South Second and High Street, and Canby Intersection 99E and South End Road, which, given the improvements that are identified in the TPR, in the transportation system plan and the concept plan, funded and unfunded, would allow all of those intersections to meet ODOT requirements for a state facility. The regional transportation plan is very concerned about connectivity and how your street standards provide better connections and safety and mobility. So, a big portion of our transportation component here is identifying a fully multimodal pedestrian, bicycle, and street sections for local mixed-use and collector-level streets. They've provided a three-tiered hierarchy of streets for the South End Concept Plan, which show in detail what sorts of facilities we envision for that area, and that is consistent with the regional transportation plan and the South End Concept Plan. Finally, consistency with statewide planning goals is detailed in pages 19 through 24 of my staff report, where we go through compliance with all of the relevant land use goals, including citizen involvement and land use planning, agricultural land, open space, scenic, historic, and natural resources, and all of the other goals that you see here. Each of these goals has a component that's implemented through our comprehensive plan too, but we're providing additional findings for compliance with these as well in the last parts of the staff report. I just want to draw your attention to the memorandum before I provide any recommendation for December 2nd. So, my description of the key new exhibits was the overview I provided of Title 11 compliance and metro conditions, the revised map of proposed comprehensive plan designations, which is Exhibit 4. We compiled all the written public testimony from the November 25th public hearing in Exhibits 26 through 31. We also have included all of the public testimony that was provided through the city's website, and which were directly emailed or mailed to me during the concept planning process. DKS Engineering has provided a transportation planning rule analysis, which is in Exhibit One of the important things that we wanted to implement, which we implemented with Park Place Concept Plan, is recommended best management practices for areas that are not within habitat conservation areas, so these are voluntary compliance measures that show how you can build in and near habitat conservation areas. Habitat conservation areas have been identified for the South End Concept Plan and would be subject to protection under the city's Natural Resources overlay district regulation following annexation. So, that's in compliance with Metro Title 13 and Title 3. These guidelines provide a variety of low-impact development techniques, including rain gardens, pervious pavement, building materials, and other methods for efficient housing and building design, and those would augment environmental protection goals of the South End Concept Plan. So, we're including those as an exhibit, and we'll be making a variety of corrections to the final draft map, which we've identified, including map resolution, street labeling, overall graphic quality, and various sidebar captions, and figures will be improved, but since we're going to be making changes based on your comments in the public hearing process, we're going to keep a list until the very end and then make those as recommended changes in the final city commission packet. And the final item is funding and financing for the public facilities, and with that, I'd like to introduce Todd Chase here. One of the questions that we had at the last planning commission meeting had to do with why there was such a wide range in the cost estimates for the square foot public facilities costs, and I wanted to introduce Todd, and we can talk about that in more detail.
I'll start with that question.
Yeah, sure.
Great. Well, thank you for inviting me here tonight. My name's Todd Chase, and we've been involved in a number of concept plans throughout the region, so hopefully we've seen it all, but you never know. Seems like every time we learn something new. This, you know, the question was, why is there such a wide range? And my reply is, why wasn't the range wider? I think at this stage in the game, we don't know a lot about design details. We don't know whether the pathways are impervious, or are they pervious? We don't know the width of necessarily all the trails. There's a certain design detail that gets worked out as you go from the concept plan to the public facility plan, and then go beyond that into the master plan that individual developers will probably end up doing as they do subdivisions. And so, the purpose really is to provide, and plus, we don't know what the city's cost share is. There might be county participation, there might be metro participation, certainly developers can participate too, and so we tend to have a pretty wide range at this stage in the game, and that's kind of my short answer.
So, we're referring to pages 45 through 52, which is the funding finance section of the plan, and that summarizes transportation, parks and trails, water, sanitary sewer, stormwater improvements to implement the concept plan. They're looking at a total cost estimate of $72 million, and then it goes into further detail from that point. We looked at estimated capital costs by area of benefit. We identify what the funding gaps are based on our existing financing mechanism. We discussed last hearing that we have a transportation funding gap of $1.87 million, a parks and trails funding gap of $2.2 to $11.4 million, and a stormwater system funding gap of $13.3 to $20.3 million.
Can I go from there? So, typically, at this stage, there usually is a gap between what the city has in terms of adopted system development charge costs per dwelling or per unit of development, and then what is required in that particular area. And in cases like Rock Creek out in Happy Valley, same thing happened, and so you end up then trying to maybe do a supplemental SDC for this area, and then if you need additional funding beyond that, sometimes you'll do an LID or reimbursement district with some advanced financing from the development community. So, those gaps don't, the only one that really kind of, I think will be the biggest challenge will probably be the stormwater one, and we're finding that more and more on some of these projects. The stormwater costs are much higher than I think they were 10 years ago for new kind of requirements for compliance, and so we might need a more comprehensive approach citywide to stormwater and management and your rate structure for that, as well as system development charges. And there are some innovative things being tested now in North Bethany that we might learn from too if it gets adopted there, where they're trying to do regional, basically regional, stormwater management reimbursement districts with advanced financing from either the county or from developers. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Do you find that there's going to be an economy of scale here where the local government just can't afford it completely? So, they're going to have to enter into partnership with the county or metro in order to get that economy of scale to equate with the project itself, because it's going to be so expensive?
There's going to be kind of a first five-year period where some initial, if you get some annexation area, some initial investment will be required to build the trunk line or build a pump station, and typically the service districts, if they're big enough, would pay for those facilities, and with rates, and the forest mains would go with them, and then you're focused on funding the gravity feeds for those facilities. And so, that first five-year period in the public facility plan really is the focus of that plan, is what needs to be funded, who's going to pay for the first kind of critical phase of infrastructure to get it going. Overall, the nice thing about the South End plan is that the overall costs are relatively low compared to a lot of other urbanizing areas that are moving forward with market and county and city kind of cost sharing, like in North Bethany, it's lower than North Bethany, it's on par, it's lower than Tiger River Terrace. So, that's the good news. So, if, you know, the market hopefully will like the plan and realize that the infrastructure costs overall are so low that, given the land investment to date and the fact that they could sell the land for, you know, $10 to $15 a square foot when it's served, all of a sudden, people realize there's, this is going to work, the market will drive this, as long as you get the first phase of infrastructure built.
Are you going to like that one-way-in, one-way-out transportation system?
Well, the first collector is probably one of those projects you want to try to seed funding for, and until that's built, it will, it will be, you're going to need some access management on South End Road, basically, and developers are used to that.
But as far as this plan moving forward, as you stated before us, and as I understand it, it's almost entirely developer-driven, that until you have developers increasing the demand for those services, that the city is not going to be building those utility services proactively ahead of time.
Exactly.
That's right.
And, but the advantage of having a plan like this is if a developer does want to move forward, then they can build the facility as stated in the plan to city standards, advance finance it, and hopefully get reimbursed through an LID or reimbursement district.
Just for the sake of those in the audience that don't have the advantage of looking at the plan that Pete's been talking about, there's a great chart on page 49 that gives a good summary of the capital costs and the potential revenue from SDCs. So, that is available on the city website. In fact, all the documents that staff has referred to tonight, you can go to the website and look at today's agenda and find those documents on the website.
What is the website address?
I'm sorry.
Website address?
It's the Oregon City website.
How do you get, what's the address?
It's www.
So, if you want to look at these documents yourself, you can download those documents and look at those in detail.
The other thing I might mention, just piggyback on what Todd said, is the near-term implementation actions include looking more closely and updating the public facilities master plans for sewer, water, and stormwater, which Public Works Department has already kicked off the stormwater update review process and the sewer update review process, and are dovetailing with our planning process here, so.
The one thing I think that would be really beneficial if the city could front-end this study would be to do a complete wetlands analysis, because I think that the way that it's been done has been on a property-by-property basis, and obviously, water doesn't go by property lines, it goes where it wants to go. And if we had that information, I think it would help us better plan that area, plus it would allow the city to properly locate public facilities, and we could use some of those wetlands, stormwater areas, or whatever we want to call them, for discharge areas, which would help, I think, in the long run. So, if there's any way that, you know, we can get a grant from, I don't know who, to help with part of that, it seems to me that that's something that we ought to do, like, right up front, because that area, I mean, I've personally seen it during flooding some years back, and I know that, you know, we don't want any situations where people go starting to fill in stuff just because they think there might be something on their property, because it could be beneficial, and there ought to be a way we can get that done, plus it would help us with development patterns, clustering of development, as opposed to, you know, the typical lot-by-lot pattern that might be out there.
Since our 1999 wetland inventory was done, which only went as far as the pre-2002 expansion, so 1980 expansion, and the area outside of that, which is subject to Metro Title 13, has the same mapping as the county does. of that, which is subject to Metro Title XIII, has the same mapping as the county does, but may be off quite a bit in terms of locations. But they have identified what known Title III streams and wetlands are out there based on the state's data. So, if we were to implement that at the local level again, it would, yeah, we could have to find some funding to do it.
Yeah, but there ought to be a way to fund it up front, and then, as those properties develop, where those areas are, maybe there's a way we can get some partial reimbursement, because we will have done the initial work.
Well, and along those lines, it would potentially help avoid, like, the subdivision we heard about, about the stream has suddenly gotten worse, and there's more discharge than ever before, and we'll have kind of a baseline, and then if mitigation does need to occur, then we can say, this is the baseline you need to bring it back down to.
Yeah, thank you. That's exactly the situation I was thinking of.
Thank you. So we have quite a bit of additional information to bring you on January thirteenth, in the form of Metro's response to our substantial compliance report. We're hopeful that they will see it positively and understand our rationale for substantial compliance. And at that time, we'll have Ray along from Metro, who's our regional planning representative here, to talk about that in some detail.
Will we see those documents prior to that January thirteenth?
Yes, and we'll have that report available at least a week prior to the public hearing on January thirteenth.
And will that be posted on the website?
Yeah, it'll be posted on the Oregon City Meetings and Agendas website, and I always put a link on the project website, southendconceptplan.org, to the Planning Commission Packet website as well, so people can find their way to that easily.
Is there any opportunity to get it prior to that, since, you know, there's a voluminous amount of material to review?
Could you force Ray to?
Yeah.
Well, you know.
The moment I get it, it's going on the website.
Many of us have gone to the Evelyn Wood speed reading school, but you do need to be able to comprehend what you're reading, not just speed through it.
Actually, I'd like the executive summary.
That's the, you want an executive summary?
Yes.
You want the Cliff Notes version?
Would you do that for me?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I'm on it right now.
I think compared to the Park Place Concept Plan analysis that we did for Title XI, which, I mean, was pretty short compared to this, but, you know, we've done a lot of work here, and I think this reflects the reality of the situation in South End, both from what the public wants and what the requirements really are in terms of the physical infrastructure out there, so.
Before the next meeting, and I don't know if this is possible, but it definitely would be something I would like to see before I start voting on this, is, if you could just, you know, get a rough draft of all the things you want to change on the plan, I mean, you listed off a bunch of stuff, so I need to then be able to look at the map I've got and figure out what, I mean, most of them are pretty self, we're going to make it clearer, you're going to be able to read the words, fine. But, you know, I'm going to, we're going to move a line one street, or we're going to put boxes, and if it's just literally, you know, hand-drawn drafty notes, you know, like, you know, we've got our plat in the background with all sorts of arrows, and just so I have a rough idea of what that's going to look like, I'd really appreciate that.
Do you want to make that land juicy?
No.
Or drafty?
It's mappy.
Mappy?
Yeah.
So I think what I hear you saying is even provide a page matrix that says, on this page, this will be changed, and just get more specific, we can easily do that.
I'm basically just concerned about the maps.
Yeah, okay.
You know, the wording is going to be what the wording is, and I can deal with that, that's really, but when it's like, well, we're going to, you know, move the little blue dots, and they're going to become red zones, and, you know, that's what I'd like to be able to visualize.
Maybe if you could just give us a little summary of what to look for, so that we don't have to dig for it.
Sure. Yeah, so I'll provide in further detail on the corrections formatting and maps on the plan itself. Okay.
Thank you.
So it's your kid, Will, I need to be excused now, if I'm going to go work on your Cliff Notes summary, you know, I'm going to go now.
So with that, unless Kirsten, you want to come up and say anything?
I'm okay.
Okay, I'm good. We would ask for a continuance of the public hearing to January thirteenth, twenty fourteen, for adoption of the South End Concept Plan.
Okay. Are we taking public testimony tonight?
Yep, and I would just ask, maybe, I'm not sure if the timer's going to cooperate completely, so if you've got, or if you want me to run it over here?
I can run my timer.
Do we have timers on our phones?
So if you'd like to comment, we do have comment forms up here that we do request that be filled out, so that we can contact folks as decisions are made in a gen, on this. Right now, I have three folks signed up to comment. First one I have is Ms. Christine Kozinski.
May I add my name to the comment list?
Certainly.
So, I would like to limit comments tonight to five minutes per person, and if you could please make an effort to stay in that timeframe, that would be excellent.
I turned my card in last, I thought I would be last.
They shuffle.
We put you right in the front of the list.
Must be my red coat. I'm Christine Kozinski, and I live in unincorporated Clackamas County. Before you start my time, I have a question. I was called the other day by Kathy Hogan, who wanted to be here tonight. Kathy's mother is not expected to live through the rest of this week. She has her testimony. Would she ask me to read? I didn't know if you wanted me to do that, or if you want me to turn it in.
If you have enough copies for everybody, that would be sufficient.
I have enough.
And perhaps you could briefly just summarize the main points.
We will provide all the comments to you, the written ones, so however you feel best to move forward.
If you have enough copies for everybody, that'd be great.
Thank you. You're getting us both trained.
Pardon me?
We're both getting trained to have enough copies for everybody.
Yes.
Which testimony does the map go to?
Mine.
Okay.
Kathy Hogan just has one sheet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
You may wonder why should Oregon City be concerned about landslides in the South End Plan, when much of the land within the boundaries is fairly flat? Please refer to the landslide photo I have given you from Dogami's website. Note that the intersection of Butel and South End Roads have been marked with an X. The photo allows for a broader view of the South End, Butel, Forest Ridge, and Navajo Way areas. Now I ask you to consider the heavy development that has already taken place outside the South End Plan. That would be Leland, Peace, Central Point, Partlow, and many other areas where a multitude of homes have been built. I ask, where is all the water being drained from these tens of thousands of homes that have already been built? Yes, much is going into detention ponds, where eventually these waters are dispersed out onto the land and into the landslides surrounding the entire valley. Water and excess drainage will eventually cause many of these landslides to reactivate. Yes, it is expensive to mitigate, a better solution for these waters to be diverted to a drainage system that will drain the waters away from the slides. However, it is far more expensive to pay for future destruction if nothing is done to deal with these hazards prior to development. In the first hearing of November twenty-fifth, you already heard testimony talking about roads outside the concept plan area already failing, slumping, eroding, due to poor soils and difficult topography. In two thousand and seven, during the concept planning for the Park Place Plan, when confronted with serious landslide problems, the city did bring in regulations for development on slopes over twenty-five percent. However, after the preliminary landslide studies were completed, it was suggested that in effort to improve the existing codes in the future, Oregon City staff would meet with Dogami to develop a plan to create a landslide hazard susceptibility map for Oregon City, indicating areas of low, moderate, and high susceptibility to landslides and areas of known slide hazards. It was suggested by Dogami that the city apply to FEMA for grant money. I do not believe the city can meet the requirements of State Goal VII and continue to develop without writing the above-promised regulations and codes into policy. Now that you have the new landslide susceptibility maps, I ask that you apply to FEMA for grant monies to improve your existing codes by developing a plan to create a landslide hazard susceptibility map for the entire city, indicating areas of low, moderate, and high susceptibility to landslides and area of known slide hazards. I ask that the long-promised steep slope and landslide regulations be in place and approved by FEMA prior to any further development in areas susceptible to and located in areas of steep slopes and landslides, with the South End Plan being one of many. Thank you.
Brief question, Christine. When you say the regulations be in place and approved by FEMA, do you mean, like, they sign off on the regulation, or that they are within the scope of the grant from FEMA?
After the ninety-six, ninety-seven floods, the city of Salem had very similar problems with slides. FEMA granted them money and actually came to Salem, worked with Salem to develop a very wonderful set of landslide regulations. And in this, they do have a risk factor that is applied to every one of their steep slopes. So it would be low-risk, moderate-risk, high-risk. And along with that goes the amount of geotechnical review that is required for each one of those areas. When we worked in the Park Place Plan, these were things that were promised, but the susceptibility maps were not available from Dogami at that point, but they are now. And so, I'm just requesting that the city contact FEMA, they're probably very familiar with doing this with Salem.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Paul Aker.
Thank you, Chair and Commission members. Paul Aker, I'm representing the CIC tonight again, and I want to thank you, all of you, for the questions that you are asking. Many of those, most of those questions, I would be asking myself, and I felt like I was being served well by your questions early in the meeting. I'd like to point out on page five of this new report that was, of raw data that was made available, it expresses here on this one, page five, the current conditions in two thousand and twelve of an intersection of South End Road and Partlow, or, not Partlow, South End and Warner Parrot. What we've got, the problem we've got in these areas is that the, excuse me, it's page four, is that what we're, we're already at sixty-eight percent of the possible existing capacity utilization in the intersection. Like, Bob, like what you said, there's only one way in, one way out. The contingencies of trying to say that TriMet's going to be able to come in with one point two billion dollars in unfunded health and retirement funds, and with what they're currently doing and what they're projected to be doing, and I've been very active on this because of the Clackamas County Transportation Advisory Committee membership that I've had. And so when you look at it, we just come to the realization that we can't be expecting much out of TriMet coming in and providing us with much bus service. It's just, I have a higher probability of us working with CANBE, trying to get CANBE to route itself off of Highway ninety-nine coming into this area than I do at looking at the potential of TriMet coming in. But what we come into the, or even the ability for me, I know I can't go west and go off the hill, and I pretty much can't go east, and these connectors trying to connect across through the canyons and through there are just, again, the contingencies are very high. So all of a sudden, the realization comes in that if I'm bringing in twenty-five thousand new trips in twenty thirty-five timeframe, in a full build-out, and I know I'm not going to get to twenty thirty-five automatically, and it's, you know, I'm going to have five-year, ten-year, and sometime, you know, out there, but we have to take a look at the full plan. And when I look at this plan, and I'm saying, okay, right now, how many vehicles am I putting through, and I'm at sixty-two percent, or sixty-eight percent on this, on Warner Parrot right now, and I start adding twenty-five thousand new trips, that's twelve thousand in the PM peak. And if I get down to it, what it boils down to, I'm getting up to the Clackamas County Transportation Advisory, or the consultant there, and our head planner, and it boils down to, we're going to get to probably about twenty-five hundred vehicles per hour, trying for a four-hour period, trying to get through that intersection. And that's the only thing, I sent an email off today talking to Tony, and I just said, you know, we may have to acquire through adverse acquisition eminent domain, a lot of the southeast side of that intersection of South End Road. I may, this is taking out multiple houses.
One minute.
Okay, I may also have to take out houses going on Warner Parrot and properties, because there's only so much of those vehicles are going to be able to go down South End Road to Second and High Street. I also look at it and say, we probably might have to take out the yellow old hospital buildings on Second and High Street on the southwest corner, and try to get more capacity there. But, oh my God, a lot of contingency, trying to sort through how we're going to put through two hundred, two thousand five hundred more vehicle trips per hour through those intersections. And I think we need to really do an origination destination study. This is where we really get down, and we get away from projections and stuff, and try to really try to understand how all of this stuff comes together, so that it, it's not, that we're all thinking the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Next, Mr. Alan Adams.
Good evening.
Evening.
Again, my name's Alan Adams, and I live up in the area there that's going to be affected by this proposed plan, and I'm very much against it for a number of reasons, one of which is, was discussed in length tonight as well.
Next, Mr. Allen Adams.
Evening.
Evening.
Again, my name's Allen Adams, and I live up in the area there that's going to be affected by this proposed plan, and I'm very much against it for a number of reasons. One of which is, was discussed in length tonight as well as the November 25th, in that I've yet to hear a definitive number as to how many units are actually going to be built. But whether it's 1,700 or 3,200, you're going to significantly increase the population of this area whenever you do it. And I agree with those who last, last time spoke about the transportation system and the roadways being insufficient to really handle that amount of volume. And I don't think anybody else has considered really the pollution that's going to come along with it, from noise pollution to air quality, et cetera, and the junk that's going to accumulate on the side of the road, which will inevitably be calm. But I don't really want to spend most of my time talking about that, nor do I want to spend a lot of time talking about the 10,400 of these things that were mailed out. I actually knocked on several doors in my neighborhood after the last meeting, and I got about a dozen people to actually answer their doors. And out of those people, only had one person that ever said they remember seeing something like this in the mail. And when I hear that kind of number, it makes me wonder, when I hear things like we're representing the desires of the existing residents and we're doing what the community is saying they want, and they're listening to the people, well, who are these people that we're actually listening to? Do they live in this community? But again, I don't really want to spend a whole lot of time on that. What I do want to focus on is, in the last meeting, I heard a lot about maintaining the rural character of the community. I don't believe this will do that. And to prove my point, I think all anyone needs to do is drive up to the road, South End Market, and look at the homes that were built right across from there over the last few years. I believe they're townhomes, so close together that you could literally stick your head out the window and spit and hit the house next to you. And look at the cars that are parked in the street on the curb that go around it and ask yourself, is that really reflecting a rural character? For anybody that tries to tell me it is, is akin to them trying to tell me that this is actually purple. I just don't think it's that way. But I think the biggest reason that a lot of people moved out to this area was for the rural character. Yes, the lots are bigger, the streets are a little wider, we have forests that surround us, we have wildlife that come, deer come into our yards. And I think all of that will disappear if you implement this plan, along with some of your homeowners who may leave because they're not going to be able to afford to connect to the sewer if they have to, because I've heard, haven't done the research, but I've heard that could cost $40,000 for some people. So for those reasons, those are just some of the reasons why I'm against it. But what really scares me is that whenever you're done with this project, what's next? What parcel of land is going to be targeted after that down the road where you're going to have to expand the roads to be able to get to that? It just never ends. And so my vote is to not ever let it begin. That's all I have. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, let me ask you a question. So you're against doing long-range planning to try to figure out how to get ahead of the curve. What would be your suggestion for accommodating the growth that we know will come in the South End area, because we have to do it? I mean, we're not, we're not doing this because we, you know, we really, I mean, maybe we do want to, but we have requirements that the city is obligated to respond to. So, you know, the do-nothing is not really a good option. So what would be your suggestion on how we accommodate future growth? Because obviously, as we said at the last hearing, this is not going to happen overnight. This is not going to happen tomorrow. It's not even going to happen in five years. It's going to be 20, you know, hopefully, I'll be in a nursing home by then, but it's, I don't see it happening in the foreseeable future of the 10, 15, 20 years.
And I can't tell you that I have an answer for that. I can only tell you that I kind of agree with him. People, people don't like change. They're afraid of change. They don't want things to change. And what's the best answer? I don't know, but I don't think, at least from my perspective, that 2,800 new units in here is going to be something that's going to maintain the rural character of this part of the city, so.
Okay, well, what about the, how it looked before you moved out there? It was much more rural than it was before you and the other people who have those subdivisions moved out there. So, you know, it already has changed. It's continuing to change. And isn't it better to be a part of the change and get ahead of the curve than just wait for something to happen that we don't want to have happen and have unintended consequences?
Well, I don't have a crystal ball, so again, I can't answer that question.
We don't either, but this is just, this is the best guess that we have. And I, and I hope, I mean, I was not able to attend every single Saturday work session, but I attended most of the other work sessions, and I'm hoping that you and your neighbors actually came and said your, said your piece or participated. But there were a lot of people there on the group that were from South End. And most of us who don't live in South End, I don't live in South End, but I live in Oregon City. And I sat most of the time and listened to what they had to say. That was my interest in it. I did not say, well, I think you should do this. I wanted to hear what they had to say and how they wanted things to happen, a slow evolution as opposed to, you know, something happening like that.
Well, again, I can't answer your question. I don't know. All I know is, from what I've heard in the meeting that I went to and with what I've studied so far is, this does not seem to maintain the rural character of the community, and I can't speak beyond that. I wish I could answer your question, but I can't.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Mr. Lowell Hannah?
Thank you for taking the time to hear my testimony. My name is Lowell Hannah. I've lived in this area about 30 years, out South End Road. I am a past commissioner of the Claremont Water District and the CRW Water District. I was on the board for 18 years. And my concern is that there is a limited, a limited amount of resource in the Clackamas River for future growth. We have just heard that they've taken Troutdale, not Troutdale, but Tigerd, and they're now going to get water from Lake Oswego. During the summer months, that river is so low at times that it, there is not enough water in it to provide for the fish in the Clackamas River. Now, you're talking about putting 1,700 to 2,300 more homes in this area. Where are you going to get the water for all these folks? It doesn't exist certain times of the year. Now, I haven't gone through your report. I hope to get a copy of that and go through it. It may so state in there how you're going to make this happen, but there is a very serious problem for Oregon City to be able to provide water to this city for the growth it's going to need in the future. The water's not going to be there. At certain times of the year, it is not there. So you'd need to take this into consideration when you're talking about doing large expansions in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
The last one that I have requesting to speak at this time?
Okay, so at this point, we're looking at a continuation to January 15th?
13.
13. Okay.
Are you making a motion?
Boy, I wanted to make sure I had the date right.
So, before we get to a motion, does staff want to respond?
Yeah, well, I think we appreciate the comments. I think that with this continuation, we'll try and address those comments. We'll go back and talk about some of the issues that have been brought up today and hopefully summarize that for you the next time we meet on January 13th. It's a Monday night, 7 o'clock here. Before we do anything else, I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, an email from Mr. Paul Aker dated 12/6/2013. Exhibit B from Mr. Walter, South End Concept Plan Exhibit List. Exhibit C is a letter from Bob Burns dated 12/5/13. Mr. Burns was on the technical committee, the team, as well as a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. So he provided comments on the public involvement component as well as some numbers, statistics on acreage per population for parks.
Did we get a copy of that?
We will be providing all this.
It wasn't part of what was on the page.
No, it wasn't. I only had one copy submitted.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I didn't drop it.
So essentially, we'll take these exhibits and put them in as one for the next hearing so you'll have an opportunity to review those. Exhibit D is the two-page, is the one-page letter on the map from Ms. Kaczynski dated 12/9/13, and then Exhibit E is the letter from Ms. Kathy Hogan dated 12/9/13 as well. So those will be in your packet for the next time, so you'll have an opportunity to look at those. So with that, we don't have anything else to add at this point. We've heard the comments. We'll try and respond to those, and we are requesting that we continue this with the record open to January 13th, 2014.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we continue the.
Second.
I didn't finish the second.
You guys go too fast here.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye to the continuance of January 13th as proposed by Commissioner Espy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Thanks, Commissioner Mayby.
Did you want to be more specific?
Commissioner McGriff?
It's a good thing she did that. I didn't know that.
I think that Commissioner Mayby needs to have more specificity in his, his comment there. Aye.
And is seconded by Commissioner McGriff.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Mr. Hankin?
I understand. I apologize for the interruption.
And Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And so if anyone would like to participate, once again, we will take written comment anytime up till the city commission actually closes their public hearing. So things can be submitted via email, via letter. We'll make sure they get in your packet. We do invite folks to come and participate orally in front of the planning commission. If the commission does make a recommendation to the city commission, there will be an opportunity for folks to comment during those hearings and submit evidence as well at that point. So the record is still open. We're still taking comments.
Thank you. And thank you all for your participation. Tony, do we have communications?
Yes.
We have a meeting tomorrow night in the, in the cold storage room.
Yes, as Commissioner McGriff has put out, tomorrow night, we have the Joint Planning Commission, City Commission Work Session. The work session starts at 5:00. We are last on the agenda. It'll probably be about 5:45 where we'll get to the Willamette Falls Legacy Project and the presentation from Walker Macy. Also.
And that is here?
That is here at City Hall, yes. Also, on December 12th, so it's Thursday of this week, from 6:00 to 8:00, we're having our third community interactive event for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. It's an open house to start looking at some of the demonstration plans we've had. It is the last community event that we're holding for public involvement and outreach. It's going to be at the Ainsworth House here in Oregon City. That's at 19130 Lot Whitcomb Drive in Oregon City. This information is on our website, rediscoverthefalls.com. Our survey is also still up, and that'll be up through the beginning of January. So if you have an opportunity to visit the website, you can look at some of the demonstration plans and take that survey. We've actually, between the two surveys we've done, we've received over 4,000 comments online, which has been just really great feedback that we've received.
Could you go back over the work session for tomorrow? You're recommending that, what time would you recommend that we be here? I mean, I know it's.
5:45, I think.
I mean.
Yeah. Should be fine.
5:45.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, because sometimes they, surprises and they speed up.
Well, I will, I won't let them start before 5:45.
Well, you could tell.
Because our consultants might not even be there until then, so.
Okay, well, there you go. All right. Thank you. That's terrific.
Yeah, that's helpful. Yes. And then we've, we've added to the schedule just a work session with the planning commission. And so what I would like to do is, we've actually have quite a, hang on to your hats here, a couple zone changes coming in in early January. So the first meeting in January, we have a zone change, and then the second meeting in January, we have potentially the second hearing for that zone change, plus another zone change coming on the agenda. What we'd like to do is hold a work session before one of those from 6:00 to 7:00 on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project with the planning commissioners, and just kind of wanted to see if that seemed appropriate to meet your needs and if folks would be able to get here at 6:00 for a work session prior to the hearing starting at 7:00.
What date?
Well, we have January, sorry, trying to get the calendar here real quick.
13th or the 27th?
January 13th or the 27th. And we'd prefer to do the 13th as it's a little bit sooner. We're really getting close to submitting the land use application by that second meeting in January, so if we could meet earlier, that would be the preference. We could meet on the 13th at 6:00.
I can be there.
Hearing, no.
Yep. Make it so.
It's done. Deal. We will send out a file-up email with more details on that.
Do you think that we are going to have, I know we have our 120-day rule, but do you think with the South End Concept Plan being on the agenda that we are going to have some reasonable amount of time to do the zone change?
We've got all night.
No, we don't. We don't have all night.
Which is why we factored in multiple hearings. There is the potential that we may, that we've scheduled two planning commission hearings for each zone change because of some of this backlog of applications coming out at the same time.
Are they complements too, or are they just zone changes?
They're just zone changes.
Okay.
Well, Paul, there's never such a thing as just a zone change. Doesn't exist. Well, I mean, I'd be willing to stay all night if you put in the budget for those City of Oregon City sleeping bags. I would be willing to do that.
Well, I will have to go find those. I haven't had the pleasure yet.
They have them. I'm telling you.
Well, how about I get the heat turned up?
I don't know if it's helping. There is some drafting through here that, one side of me is 98.6, the other side is about 40. I don't know what it is.
Next time, you sit over here then.
I have on a lot of clothes tonight.
The last, just announcement to put on your calendar, we'll provide more specifics probably either tomorrow night or the next time I am in front of you. We're looking at February 6th of 2014 is kind of a culmination, reaching out to all the folks who've participated in the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. We'll be holding an evening event that night up in Portland, just to thank those who've participated, champions that we've brought along. So I'll provide more details on the location and the time.
What's the date?
It is February 6th, 2014.
I don't mean to be laughing about this, but how do we have a celebration for something that's happening here in Portland?
Just because of the venue.
I'm just a little, I must be feeling punchy from the cold as hypothermia is setting in here.
Yeah. It's, it's really, you know, bringing in all our regional state partners, and we were trying to find an event.
The food's better there.
The food's better. Hey, wait a minute. We have good food in Oregon City.
Yeah, we do.
We could have, we have venues here in Oregon City.
We do, yes. So those are the updates that I have for, for tonight.
Quick update on the sign committee, because it's where I was. We had our last, our fourth meeting. And just a heads up, a couple, a number of split decisions with the group. Some, some were signs on fences, signs on parked vehicles, signs on people, signs inside windows, but really the ones that kind of get your, that had people talking with more urgency were billboards and electric message centers. So as this, I would advise that people wrap their heads around those and where they may fit in Oregon City, if at all.
Thank you for saying that, if at all.
Where, where's this going? Is, is there documents, I mean, out of, out of the committee?
Yeah, they'll be providing, staff, as I understand, will be providing language and recommendations for us to look at, including some of the comments from everybody.
So we'll be, with the help of the committee, they went through tonight, kind of getting a feeling for consensus on issues, whether there was disagreement, what the minority position was on some of the outstanding issues. Part of, the consultants now and staff are going to start writing, implementing code. We will be holding work sessions with the planning commission to bring them up to speed before we start the hearing process itself.
And there was a number that there was consensus for, but those ones kind of stuck out.
So Zach, a question for you is, what, what, did you guys take a look at the regulations that the city of Milwaukee implemented after one of those electronic reader board signs went up and they were completely taken aback by it?
Not specifically, although Milwaukee was brought up a number of times, as well as Lake Oswego. Electronic message centers, I mean, there's so much that goes into them. I mean, be it how often they flash, where they are, do you do it? That were.
So Zach, a question for you is, what, what, did you guys take a look at the regulations that the City of Milwaukee implemented after one of those electronic reader board signs went up and they were completely taken aback by it?
Not specifically, although Milwaukee was brought up a number of times, as well as Lake Oswego. Electronic message centers, I mean, there's so much that goes into them. I mean, be it how often they flash, where they are, do you do it, that where it needs a review or not. So, I mean, there is basically opinions all over the place. So, I mean, I think drilling that down and seeing where everyone's opinions lies is really going to lead us into this.
I think that hopefully through the work that the committee's done, though, is, you know, there were a lot of things that we were able to address.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And really, it's kind of the, the larger policy discussions that, you know, we're going to have with planning commission, we'll have with city commission, and, you know, so a lot of that work will be done, and we can kind of focus on the areas where there are concerns raised or desires for, for seeing something different or whatnot. So I think that's, you know, one of the most, more helpful parts of the hard work that the committee has done to date.
And thank you for doing all that.
So it's hard, yeah, it's hard to balance that business friendly thing that you have to have about economic development. Businesses want to be here, and, you know, eliminating sign clutter.
And be content neutral at the same time.
Be content neutral. These guys are done here about content neutrality.
Well, the thing that's interesting about, about businesses and sign is that, you know, more is not better. You know, the more...
Unless you're advertising agents.
Yes, but it's...
If you're a sign company, more is much.
Well, I know, but I'm just talking about in general, if you're a motorist, you're for your pedestrian, if you're a, whatever mode you're on, if it's too much, you're not going to pay any attention to it. So everybody's eye can't be caught by everything. I mean, you just have to have something that, that is welcoming, attractive, you know, whatever that right size is, so that, that it provides the needed identification. But, you know, I was just thinking about the, where biscuits used to be there on Malala Avenue, the new business that moved in there, I think they think more is more. I mean, it's just everywhere. And I mean, it's too bad.
It's unfortunate. A lot of it's bang for the buck. I mean, with all the banners and things, it's, if you invested in a really good expensive sign...
I know.
It would be better.
No, I can't, I can't agree with you more. I mean, it, it's one of those things where I'm, I'm probably extremely subjective about signing. If, if somebody has taken the time to really think about what they're trying to advertise to me or anyone else, I'm more inclined to go there as opposed to, you know, the intensity, or the number, or whatever, because I'm thinking, okay, they, they just haven't thought about that. And a lot of small businesses don't. You know, I've been in, I've run a small business with a friend, and, you know, less is more.
So you don't like those big places with the big pink gorillas on top of them?
Oh, you mean the spa place?
And it's blue.
I seek those out.
He's yellow now, but he does have shorts on, as I've noticed on the highway.
That's nice. Yeah, it's really good.
And he's holding a duck.
Right.
So that was the pregame for what's to come.
So is that it for tonight?
That's all I have for tonight.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Second.
We are adjourned.